This January 9th, 2020, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Marshall High School Concert Choir under the direction of Kelly Pearson.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight O'er the rough hearts we washed were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
That was absolutely beautiful. The board held a closed meeting earlier this evening and certified compliance immediately upon convening reconvening in public at the forum work session, which preceded tonight's regular meeting. A few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. We are thrilled to convene this first meeting of the school board elected in 2019 for the 2020-2023 term. The board represents a number of firsts and is as diverse and reflects the beautiful mosaic that makes up the population of Fairfax County. It is representative of one Fairfax. I am truly honored and humbled to be able to serve with such an esteemed group. I would also like to welcome Jason Morgan, our parliamentarian, who is seated to my right in the leadership team box. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs under upcoming School Board meetings. The meeting is also being streamed live online. Select School Board from the full menu, then click on the Watch Live button on the School Board Meeting's webpage. Please turn off or silence your cell phones. I call on Ms. McLaughlin for a motion or recognition.
On behalf of the Fairfax County School Board, I am honored to recognize the Lake Braddock Bruins for winning the Class 6 Baseball State Championship this past spring. On June 14th, the varsity baseball team played a doubleheader where they defeated Chesterfield County's James River High School in the semifinals and then defeated a cross-county rival, Westfield High School, for the championship. Finishing the season with a 29-4 record, the Bruins' hard work and dedication helped them clinch their first state title since 2012. Head Coach John Thomas credits a theme of toughness as a key factor for their success. The players focused on building strength during the offseason and remain consistent and determined throughout the season. Coach Thomas won the state's Coach of the Year Award for his efforts in developing a team with expert talent and perseverance. Closing out the season with a state title is a great source of pride for the Lake Braddock Bruins and for the entire Fairfax County community. Congratulations to all of the players for their accomplishments and victory. We wish you the very best in your future athletic and academic endeavors. And this time, I would like to recognize and invite Principal Smith, the coaches, the
I now call on Ms. Cohen for a recognition of the Lake Braddock Secondary School Girls' Cross Country State Championship team.
I feel like Ms. Seismar Heizer is probably better to give a running commendation, but from the slowest person on the school board, I super appreciate what you've done. On behalf of the Fairfax County School Board, I'm honored to recognize the Lake Braddock Bruins Girls' Cross Country Team for winning the VHSL Class 6A Championship on Sunday, November 16th. This is their fourth, sorry, boys, this is their fourth 6A title in five years and 13th overall. In addition to the team members, I would like to congratulate Coach Mike Mangan, Assistant Coaches Jason Switzer, Niles Lendenbland, nope, Lindenblad, and Zach Hawkins. All of the girls who raced factored in the scoring on the challenging Great Meadows 5K course. Individually, Sophie Willis and Lexi Haig made the All-State Team via their performance. I want to congratulate the entire team as well as their coaching staff. Closing out the season with a state title is a great source of pride for the Lake Braddock Bruins and the entire FCPS community. Congratulations to all the players for their accomplishments and victory. We wish you the very best in your future athletic and academic endeavors. At this time, I would like to invite Principal Smith, coaches, teams, staff, and family and friends to the dais for a photo with the board.
Like nothing to do with the world today.
Thank you, Bruin family, for helping us celebrate the start of this new year and the new board. Month.
Thank you very much, Chairman Corbett Sanders. I am honored to present a resolution on Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Whereas human trafficking remains a largely unperceived threat to the students of Fairfax County, misunderstood and underappreciated by a majority of the community, despite its persistence and prevalence across the nation and in our county, still on track to eclipse drug trafficking by revenue generated in the near future. With growing evidence that criminal organizations are specifically targeting Northern Virginia as an especially lucrative market, and whereas human traffickers are known to target not only middle and high school teens, but even elementary school students, so that the victims have been identified from every high school and multiple middle and elementary schools across the county, with teens and younger children stalked physically at locations such as shopping malls and bus stops and online through social media, particularly those applications that offer anonymity. And whereas new trafficking victims continue to come from a wide variety of ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds, and many students do not recognize the warning signs when they or their friends are being groomed and manipulated by new so-called "friends" until it is too late to escape, with victims trapped by threats of violence or exposure and often by physical abuse. And whereas Fairfax County Public Schools, with the support of the Just Ask Prevention Foundation, continue to teach a widely admired teen sex trafficking prevention curriculum in grades 6 through 12, which serves as a model for other jurisdictions and has made notable progress in raising awareness of the threat and steps students can take to mitigate it. And whereas student groups at an increasing number of Fairfax County high schools and middle schools have held campaigns to raise awareness about teen sex trafficking and activate thousands of teens, and as a direct result of these campaigns, new leads have been brought to the attention of law enforcement authorities and victims have been rescued. And whereas alongside these student groups, educators, parents, medical professionals, law enforcement officials, civic organizations, and the business community have all stepped forward to emphasize the importance of bringing awareness about teen sex trafficking to young people and desire to further mobilize students and others in the community to progress towards an environment where this crime is not tolerated and its victims receive the full support of the community. Now therefore be it resolved that Fairfax County School Board joins Fairfax County Board of Supervisors in recognizing the month of January 2020 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Fairfax County and supports the efforts of all those who are seeking to eliminate human trafficking and its impact on our community. I so move.
Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Ms. Pikarski. Ms. Seismar Heizer, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would. I am honored to be able to bring this resolution and to present this resolution today. Human trafficking is an issue that affects every part of our county and it affects our children regardless of race, gender, or socioeconomic status, and is often an issue that goes untalked about and understood in our county. Yet, its prevalence is growing significantly throughout the country. There were over 10,000 incidences of human trafficking in the United States in 2017, and this number is widely understood to be underreported because so many of our human trafficking victims are ashamed and do not seek support or report. So I am proud to be able to present this resolution today, and I'm actually especially proud because the first person who brought this issue to my attention was my own daughter, Laura, when she served on the Fairfax County Women's Commission before she went to college. And she brought it to my attention, the number of students that she had heard talk about this issue and the prevalence of it. So I'm proud, as a proud mother, to be able to now bring this resolution today on my first day officially on the school board and to bring hopefully hope, prevention, awareness to all of our victims and to prevent future victims from happening in the first place. Thank you.
Ms. Pikarski, would you like to speak to your second?
Just briefly, thank you. I'm honored to also second this motion. As my colleague said, this is something that is not often enough talked about in our communities. However, it is not, it does not have a stereotypical victim, a stereotypical community. It is everywhere, and it is actually a topic that has recently touched my own community, my children's friends, and I am grateful that we can bring this to light, we can educate our parents, our staff, and our communities at large to be vigilant, to look out for each other, and to keep our children safe, which is our most important job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pikarski. And before I recognize Ms. Boating, I do want to recognize that a very strong advocate on human trafficking and a long-term member of this board, Mr. Ryan McElveen, is in the audience, so welcome, Mr. McElveen, and thank you for your advocacy in this area. Ms. Boating.
I would just like to recognize a couple Boy Scouts in our midst.
I'm sorry, Ms. Boating, this was pertinent to the resolution.
I apologize. No, I was trying to recognize the Boy Scouts.
That will be right after this, I promise.
Wonderful, okay. We'll wait on that one. Come back to me.
Thank you, Ms. Boating. With no other board members indicating a wish to speak on this, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of the Human Trafficking Awareness Month resolution. And that is unanimous, the motion carries. Ms. Boating.
Okay, now I'm going. So I'd like to recognize Johann Torres from Troop 995 and Aravind Naidu, I apologize if I messed up your name, from Troop 1313. And if I missed anybody, please also stand to be recognized. So sorry, could you tell me your troop name, like your name and your troop number?
Matthew Wright, Troop 1887.
My name is Noah Wright, also Troop 1887.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boating. The next order of business is citizen participation. Tonight, eight citizens have signed up to address the board. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to no more than three minutes. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Please be mindful that there are often young children in attendance at these meetings or watching at home, so language should be appropriate for all age levels. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come to speak to us tonight. My first speaker is Rania Abercheid, followed by Ryan McElveen. Okay, Mr. McElveen, please.
My name is Ryan McElveen, and it's an honor to be with you here tonight. I think many of us would agree that the prior board left much work uncompleted, and there is certainly much that I could stand here and urge you to do, but I will leave that to someone following me, namely George Becerra. But the most important thing and most urgent thing request that I have of all of you is to recognize two special colleagues who contributed each more than two and a half decades of their lives to this system, Janie Strauss and Illyon Moon. Keep in mind that each of them alone had more years of experience than the entire current board sitting here tonight. While we had an opportunity to recognize them informally last month, we were unable to complete our formal recognition of their service to our system. Tonight, I am submitting to you a proposal to name the athletic training room at Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology as the Illyon Moon Athletic Training Room and the Drama Department Dressing Rooms at McLean High School as the Janie Strauss Dressing Rooms. Between October and December, I worked with staff and system leadership to find facilities at both schools that each of their children attended that had not yet been dedicated. Giving Illyon, given Illyon and Janie's unwavering support for countless FCPS students in both sports and athletics over their multiple decades of public service, we thought it would be ideal to name these spaces after them. After all, Illyon was the board member who successfully proposed a budget amendment to have the full-time athletic trainer position in every high school, much to Brad Drager's consternation back in the day. And of course, Janie's legacy will also live on for generations through the Cappies Program, which she and her late husband Bill built. I also just learned that Bill once wrote a musical for McLean students to perform and that the seeds for Cappies began at McLean. As you may know, the school board, at my behest unfortunately, made a change several years ago to the policy for naming school facilities and dedicating areas of school facilities or grounds, Policy 8170, that stated, "Names of persons actively serving FCPS shall not be considered." As a result, despite my best attempt, the prior school board was unable to propose and vote for this naming opportunity for them back in December. In turn, it falls to all of you, the incoming school board, to complete the process, and I will be passing along the supporting materials that I have compiled to the new school board to finalize it. I am very gracious to Tammy, who has offered to lead this effort, and she has promised that she will stay on the school board long enough to complete it, and I know that she will work together with Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. McLaughlin, and Ms. Kees-Gamar to bring it to fruition. I'd also like to thank Scott, Frances, Fabio, McLean Principal Ellen Riley, TJ Principal Anne Bonitatibus for their help and support of these recognitions. And finally, I would like to offer my congratulations, although they are not here, to Illyon and Janie for careers of great import to this system, and I hope that all of us together will be able to gather together and celebrate them once this naming is complete. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen. Tina Williams, followed by Dave Hatcher.
On behalf of the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers, I just want to say welcome and congratulations to this new school board. We're hopeful that your work as liaisons at your particular committee will improve our school system to better serve our students, educators, the community, and we are here to work with you. As we enter 2020, we urge this board to prioritize public schools by meeting the needs of the people who work and learn in them. We urge this board to increase resources to enforce clear and consistent student discipline policies, fix the sub shortage, and increase educator wages. These steps will reclaim the promise and potential of our school system where every child is educated equitably regardless of zip code or demographics. Students face an increasingly volatile and complicated world. Our schools need appropriate levels of mental health services, including school counselors, psychologists, social workers, and nurses who have the vital skills to best serve our students. Today's educators constantly juggle student behavior challenges while meeting all the diverse needs presented in their classrooms. This is a daunting challenge as class sizes continue to grow. To ensure that our educators are equipped to meet the needs of the entire classroom and address behaviors in an effective and consistent way across the county, we urge you to provide ongoing training for all school staff and adopt enforcement mechanisms that include accountability at the regional area superintendent and principal levels to ensure these policies and procedures are implemented with fidelity. The sub shortage in our county is contributing to anxiety, overwhelm, and overwork for our educators, and this does not serve our students. Many of our educators can't secure a reliable quality substitute that will meet the needs of their students, and as a result, teachers often teach when they're sick or have a family emergency or IAs, school counselors, or support staff fill in. To improve the situation, we urge the board to train a dedicated pool of subs that will work along with instructional and/or special services. This would include requiring those subs to shadow a teacher before they enter the classroom, increasing sub pay, and providing IAs a stipend in addition to their regular salary when they serve as a teacher is also needed. Our educators work in conditions are our students' learning conditions. We must recruit a diverse pipeline and move salaries to a premier level. Fairfax County is the 10th wealthiest county, yet many of our educators don't make enough to support their families and live in the county they work. Some of them work multiple jobs. We need to recruit and retain that great workforce. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Dave Hatcher, followed by Norman Hall.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dave Hatcher. I'm a 30-year resident of Providence District here. I've spoken several times before, the last being just before Merry Christmasy. Two kids matriculated through Luther Jackson here and Falls Church High. I just wanted to say how excited some of us are with the new policy announced by an outgoing at-large board member. Fairfax County Public Schools will now allow students to skip school to attend protests. Students in grades seven through 12 would be allowed one excused absence per year for civic engagement activities. The same at-large member told The Washington Post, "It's the dawning of a new day in student activism, and school systems everywhere are going to have to be responsive to it." Sounds like a threat. Going to have to be responsive to it. How exciting, though, that the policy takes effect 72 hours after the massive National March for Life on the Mall here in DC in January. What pride that from now on, National Marches for Life will be on the anniversary weekend of Fairfax's groundbreaking policy to allow kids to march with counterparts from around the world against abortion. By the way, Planned Parenthood's annual report last year, 345,672 unborn babies aborted. That's more than the population of Honolulu, Riverside, California. Governor Northam here says we should be allowed, parents should be allowed to terminate new life even after delivery. Heinous. Nazi stuff. Let me ask about policy specifics, though, such as what records will be kept and put on file at headquarters, and obviously, for what reason will kids be allowed to miss school? Did each kid, being so privileged, really check in at school on that specific day? Will there be awards each year for the school or schools with the greatest number of school hours given over to attending civic activities? What will be the approval process at each school for the authenticity of each request and the bona fides of each outside organizer? Will the numbers of civic absences be increased each year? Nonetheless, think of it. Can you feel the excitement when others read headlines everywhere, such as Fairfax students rally to support gun rights, rally to support a border wall, and enforcement of existing immigration law, rally to support sanctuary cities for unborn babies, plus causes like the affirmation of the Defense of Marriage Act, the unmet needs of our veterans, me being one, permitting vouchers to students trapped in underperforming public schools? The possibilities are endless, and failing to act is not an option. Let's get this new wave of kids learning about the real world. Are you as excited as we are, Dr. Braybrand? Boy, oh, boy.
Mr. Hall, followed by Kathleen Gillette-Millard.
Good evening. I'm Norm Hall, a proud member of the Fairfax County Special Education PTA. Please understand that SEPTA is an organization whose leadership is sensitive to speaking on behalf of the whole community we present. Therefore, the comments I make tonight represent my personal perspective. I speak to school board liaison and committee assignments. I appreciate the majority of this board has just begun your service, and I personally consider all of you to be supporters of students with disabilities and their parents, teachers, other staff, and the administrators who support them. I have enjoyed thoughtful conversations on key issues with Chairman Corbett Sanders and Budget Chairman McLaughlin. After this evening, I am sure that I will have a lot more to say and ask about next year's budget. Regarding board committees, I want to start by recognizing Ms. Kees-Gamara. Closing comments at the last school board meeting, where she announced that the Audit Committee plans to look at special education. I know that others have expressed similar ideas as a way to make sure that special education in FCPS is proceeding as planned. This would be an important step. I applaud such a move, and will be interested in learning more about the proposed scope and the qualifications of the personnel who would be reviewing outcomes for signs of compliance. During your campaigns, you were asked about the hole in the discipline study, concerns about staffing issues, and just one month before the election, we heard Dr. Braybrand acknowledge in this auditorium that the achievement gaps for students with disabilities have not budged here and elsewhere in the Commonwealth. I welcome an audit step and hope that improvements that result will be matched by progress in other areas. I have been a frequent source of citizen comments before this school board on your business and that of affiliated organizations. Please continue the strong presence at Skipt, the successful children and youth policy team, whether through the participation of Ms. Dariane Kovacs and Ms. McLaughlin or others. I have suggestions and topics for consideration there. One would be to follow up on my remarks after the last meeting's discussion of closing the digital gap by having the county and FCPF staffs include people with expertise on accessibility issues. And through the Advisory Committee on Students for Disabilities, I trust the school board will have a representative to highlight inputs and suggestions for ways to work on unmet needs. The basic overriding charge of this body, since the school board profiles no longer show SOL pass fail rates at the level of schools and grades, how will the community be able to identify schools that are making progress? The ACSD should be key to that discussion. Finally, please provide support for both the minority students' academic oversight and human resources advisory committees through school board appointments that sustain the momentum these groups had through the end of last year. While their focus is not directed on the systemic problem solving students with disabilities, their recommendations are likely to be important components of the solutions. Details will follow. I look forward to continuing conversations with all of you on these and many other issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Ms. Millard, followed by Kimberly Adams.
Thank you. Good evening. I appreciate this opportunity to talk with you all, and best wishes to all of the new school board members. I'm a 40-year Fairfax County resident, taxpayer, parent, stepparent, and stepparent of former FCPS students. My topic will be on family life education, and it was kind of interesting. I found some incongruities between the Virginia Code and the FCPS regulation. In other words, what I found was the Virginia Code says that the family life education program will have goals of reducing the incidence of pregnancy, sexually transmitted diseases, and substance abuse among teenagers. So, that's among teenagers. However, the Fairfax County School Board Regulation 1708 goes from kindergarten through 12th grade. I guess, you know, in part, yes, in some instances, they talk to young kids about pregnancies, sexually transmitted diseases, and substance abuse. I'm going to share with you, all of you, this wonderful flyer. It has a rating scale on it that was conducted by ParentAndChild.org, a group of Fairfax County parents with backgrounds in education, healthcare, biology, and law. I'm providing 60 flyers. I urge you to share them with your 14 school board member reps, six community reps, and 10. As you note, the emotional, social, health, and human growth lessons are broken down by grade and color. Green is good, amber caution, red, please be careful. An example of this is, in keeping with human sex trafficking, grade six. Now, these are 11-year-olds. Topic: Child Abuse Neglect. Students are introduced to the topics of sexual abuse and neglect. Lesson plans suggest that children discuss and sort the definitions of different types of child abuse with their peers. A video about sex trafficking mentions rape, prostitution, servicing 30 customers a day. This is for sixth graders? This is too intense for a 10-year-old. It's too intense for me, a 60-year-old. Grade five, Human Growth and Development, topic: Sexually Transmitted Infections. And there is some accurate information, but this is grade five. So, it's not age-appropriate to talk about sexually transmitted diseases and how you get them, oral sex, anal sex, you know. You all know the thing, and I don't want to shock our young people here, but they're getting this in school anyway. So, anyway, I just want to say, I have extra copies of this rating system. I urge you all, please, share it with your school reps and your committee members. Thank you very much for your consideration. And please take into consideration our young people.
Ms. Adams, followed by Mr. Becerra.
Good evening, Chairman Corbett Sanders, new school board members, returning school board members, and Dr. Braybrand. My name is Kimberly Adams, and I am speaking as the president of the Fairfax Education Association. I just want to make sure you all feel very welcome at the dais tonight, and we are so thrilled that you are all here. The FBA is excited to have the opportunity to meet with you, share our glows and grows, and help you be successful in your tenure on the board. We are looking forward to working with you as committee liaisons, and thank you for your thoughtful action on the vacancies, appointments, and necessary changes within these committees. Each of you likely recalls hearing our members talk about the issues facing your employees, either in meetings with you in person or at this podium. Unfortunately, our working conditions remain the top concern in FCPS, and you will hear over the coming weeks that this has both budgetary as well as non-budgetary impacts. Too many teachers have reached the maximum class size. There's not enough support staff in each building. Central offices are stretched thin. Planning time is being taken away. Substitute jobs are hard to fill. The nature of the workload is exponentially more difficult to accomplish, and no one can do their best under these conditions. Employee retention remains an issue across the system. FBA has spent many years working on improvements to workplace culture. We helped bring the first working conditions survey to the district, advocated to make this a statewide mandate to protect all of our colleagues inside and out of the classroom. We are working with human resources within FCPS to address employee bullying and ways to provide the silent witness program when employees feel they cannot face their supervisors alone. FBA is working to ensure that your employees' voices continue to be included as we address this environment. We must ensure that progressive discipline remains in place and that the evaluation system is used to improve instruction and job performance while maintaining a focus on growth and not punishment. All the items mentioned above would fall under an employee contract if the state legislature votes to allow collective bargaining to return to the Commonwealth. In FCPS, we have always maintained a meet-and-confer process, very similar but non-binding. We ask that this board consider supporting the process of collective bargaining, adding positive language to your legislative program. We look forward to continuing in the spirit of collaboration and good faith that we have in each other as employees and employers. A positive relationship is critical, and I have spent most of my career in FCPS forging that partnership and continuing to move FCPS forward. Thank you for all that you have done so far, all that you will be doing, and I look forward to meeting with each of you soon.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Becerra.
Good evening, Chairman Corbett Sanders and school board members. Happy New Year and best wishes to you all during this term. I decided to bring a light topic tonight because Mr. McElveen told me he was going to defer some of his minutes to me, but that didn't occur. I'm here to talk about a phrase I've heard here for over a decade that I've been an advocate, keeping the main thing the main thing. I know after tonight I could be inundated with the school budget after the presentation, but what's the number-one responsibility of a school board member, Ms. Homish? I know we have talked about this many times. It's the hiring and rehiring of the superintendent. That's the number-one responsibility of a school board member. The superintendent runs the system. As the contract term of Superintendent Brayband ends in 2021, this year will be critical. You all will have to evaluate, determine, and see if his contract is renewed. Nine out of 12 of you all did not hire him. The remaining three may or may not have voted for him in the first round, and there are you three who may have want to vote for him again. I'm not here to advocate for or against Dr. Braybrand. I'm just here to talk about the discussions you need to have in the next couple of months. The decisions have to be made by this fall 2020 in order to have the community to respect, to have enough time if a new superintendent is needed or not, through the process of a hiring firm and also to get in community input. In order to do this also, is who will be the next chairman? Another key decision if this process is made in July, that's when you guys vote on the next chairman. Also, in terms of evaluations, I know that in terms of the superintendent evaluation from the pass board should be coming out or has come up. I haven't looked one more duck. Sorry, I apologize, but that's made public by law. So, look at that as a reference. All I'm saying is this, don't get bogged down on the school budget because the number-one thing that you guys were voted on is to hire the superintendent. That's who runs the system. Not saying the school budget is not important. Also, as the community, as you know, is financially responsible. Accountability is a big term around here. The superintendent makes more than county executive, so that's a big decision you all have to make in terms of financial responsibility. I don't advocate salaries, but I do know what the numbers are and what the people want in terms of how their money is being stured. End of the day, like I said, I'm just here to keep the main thing the main thing, looking to see what the future lies. Again, I like to say I'm not here for or against Dr. Braybrand staying, but I'm here for you guys to do your jobs of what is coming up. My gut feeling in a short amount of time, you guys are barely going to be spelling FCPS by the first year and a half. It's a hard job, but at least try to dwell into this to see if the next term, for the next four years, for most parents' lives, number-one decision is their superintendent and their kid's education. So, thank you very much.
So, that concludes our citizen participation for the evening. I do want to make one clarification about the implementation or the effective date of the civic engagement regulation. That comes into effect earlier than what was originally discussed and will be in effect in time for those families that choose to have their children participate in the March for Life. So, now, call on Ms. Boating for the Student Representative Matters.
Good afternoon, everyone. I hope that everyone had a very happy New Year. I hope everyone also had a very restful break, for those who decided to take it, because I know some people, some of my friends, maybe me sometimes, wanted to, like, use the break to kind of get ahead. But I decided this break, I wanted to rest, and it was very well-needed, and I hope that everyone also took advantage of their break to get much-needed rest, because now we're back into full swing, and, well, sort of, because it's been an odd week for everyone. We had our first snow day of the year, so that was exciting. I know some of the new board members kind of figured out what's happening on Twitter every single time that there's a little prospect of snow, so that's fun. So, I also wanted to personally welcome the new joining members. I'm super excited to be able to work alongside all of you, and I'm looking forward to getting to know each and every one of you individually. And I don't really have too much to say for today, because I want to start off very, like, you know, mellow and stuff, but this year, I feel as if we can strive for many things, not just as a county, but as individuals, to be more accepting, to be more kind, and to be more loving to both ourselves and to others, because we know in this time and age, the world can be very scary, can be very dark, and it's easy to let that consume us as human beings, but we can't let that consume us. So, I'm going to start the year off by saying that this year, I wish strength and joy to whoever is listening, whoever is not listening, and if we stay grounded in what we believe in and what we're passionate about, then we're just unstoppable. Thank you.
Beautiful, Ms. Boating. I call on Dr. Braybrand for the presentation of the fiscal year 2021 Proposed Budget.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders, members of the school board. It's an exciting moment to have you all here at the inaugural school board session for 2020, and it's exciting that that coincides with my proposed budget presentation here for FY21. This is a budget I am pleased tonight to tell you invest in excellence in Fairfax County Public Schools. This is a budget that does keep the main thing the main thing and invests in our teachers and support staff with market-based compensation and provides additional supports, particularly social-emotional supports, for our students to ensure student success. Let me show you the strategic plan focus that we have had to guide us Let me show you the strategic plan focus that we have had to guide us for the last two years. This is a budget that we continue to align around our strategic plan. There are four major categories in our strategic focus: student success, caring culture, premier workforce, and resource stewardship. Under each of those four buckets are desired outcomes that we've been particularly focused on, eight of them. For student success, Portrait of a Graduate Attributes for Every Child, Elimination of Access, Opportunity, and Achievement Gaps, and a focus on early education and school readiness. For caring culture, we've really focused on a welcoming environment in all of our schools and offices and healthy life choices for our students and employees. For premier workforce, we focused on market-based compensation, particularly for our teachers but for all of our employees, and continuing to do everything we can to retain, attract, promote, and recognize exceptional employees. And for resource stewardship, our final category, efficient budgeting and allocation. This is a budget where in our total budget, 82% of our budget invests in the categories of student success and premier workforce. And tonight, I'll be asking for an additional $172 million in resources. 84% of those dollars will be focused on student success and premier workforce. We're committed to having a budget that really does promote academic excellence here in Fairfax County Public Schools while providing social-emotional supports for kids. And I look forward to sharing with you the work that we've done in the slides ahead. One of the things that you know in Fairfax County, we have been a system that has maintained a legacy of excellence. We have sought to be and strive to be the premier school district, not just in the Commonwealth but in the country, and to be recognized around the world for our work. You can see here, we've maintained a very strong 91% graduation on time rate. We've seen 89% of our graduates attend post-secondary programs, 86% of our kids earning at least one industry certification, so important to our workforce. Over 70% of our students passing an APIB or do enrollment course. We've seen our SAT scores continue to rise over the last two or three years. We continue to have high levels of national merit scholars, lots of scholarship awards, over $100 million. And we continue to see kids recognized for their contributions at CAPPES and the arts along with service hours in the community. And we've continued to be maintained AA school district by several, several organizations. As you know, each year our opportunity really is to invest in excellence. And the FY21 budget, next year's budget, will represent the 150th year of Fairfax providing public education in this county. Our goal has been excellence, but we've had to define that for every generation. And I share with you tonight that our generation's challenge, this new board's challenge, working together in partnership, is excellence through equity for every child. We need to have, and this budget does have, a journey to ensure that every child by name and by need receives an equitable education that is inclusive and respectful, where access, opportunity, and achievement are afforded to all. This is the vision of one Fairfax that the Fairfax County School Board, this board passed, and the Board of Supervisors passed. And we will provide excellence through equity here in Fairfax County Public Schools. If you look at our budget, we really focus on our strategic plan goal areas: student success, caring culture, premier workforce, and resource stewardship. I want you to know this is a $3.2 billion school operating budget, which is a 5.8% increase over last year, and our largest investments, as I shared with you in our initial slide, are around student success and premier workforce. 54% of what we have proposed is aligned to student success, 29% for premier workforce. I want to show you now the changes in the budget compared to last year that are in this FY20 budget. And again, they're broken out by strategic goal area. You see student success, caring culture, premier workforce, and resource stewardship. I'm going to go now and go through each one of those goals in more detail and give you some additional insights. First, for student success. The first area under student success, again, almost $50 million around student success, one of our largest areas of focus, is first our global student success. All of the things that we're doing in our programming to make our students have success here in Fairfax County. The first item is over $28 million in this budget to support enrollment and student demographics. We are seeing growth in Fairfax County schools. We're seeing an 8% growth in general education and our general education students. But we're also seeing changing demographics at higher growth rates. We're seeing a growth rate of EL students at 2.2% or English Language, a growth rate for special education students at 3.5%, and a growth rate for our free and reduced eligible students at almost 7%. Greater, all of those growth rates are greater than the general education growth rate. We need to continue, last year in the budget, we actually saw a slight decline in our enrollment, and in this year's budget, we're seeing growth of over 28 million. We also have on here a High School Assistant Director of Student Activities staffing. We have provided for years 0.5 staffing. This budget would move it to 0.75. We've seen the growth of our extracurricular and activity programs, which sometimes are a lifeline, a connection that changes student achievement in the classroom. The reality is, as we've looked at our school staffing, almost all of our high schools trade staffing that could be going for classrooms and class size to have support for this Assistant Director of Student Athletics and Activities. This is a top priority of our high schools to get provided more direct dedicated staffing to support those extracurricular programs so that they can better support students in their schools. One of the other things that I want to share with you is under student success global is online campus. Additional dollars here in the budget to support the growing number of kids who are choosing online campus as part of their education. Another important part of student success is elimination of gaps. We need to remove, as I shared in the strategic plan focus, we need to remove access and opportunity gaps so that we can remove achievement gaps. And the first thing that I have here is for the first time ever in the history of Fairfax County, I am putting in funding to support a chair leadership position in up to 70 elementary schools with large special education populations. It will be 0.5 in dedicated staffing. We currently have teachers who are on full teaching loads trying to be lead special education teachers in our schools. We have a successful model at middle and high where we've had a department chair at our middle and high, but our elementary haven't been designed by departments. This is a proactive response and this chair position will help us not only include best practices in special education instruction, not only ensure better monitoring and compliance of special education policies and procedures, but also will serve as a true leader in the building to help make sure that we are. I urge you to support this. This will also be a position that will help us deal with behavior and crisis management issues around our special education students. I am very excited to share the proactive work that Teresa Johnson and Dr. Duran and their staffs have been doing in creating an unprecedented position that has never existed before in Fairfax County Public Schools. I also have dollars in here to continue FCPS on at our high schools. We closed the digital divide in Fairfax County last year by providing that. Kimberly can share with you her feedback and those of other students for that work that we did this year. We had FCPS on in some schools and high schools, but not in all. And I have in this budget to continue that work in the high school and to expand it to our middle schools in Fairfax County. Also in here, we have dollars to support Office of School Support expansion. This is a program that started with about 40 schools four or five years ago for schools that were facing accreditation challenges. When I got here, it was a program that was working and I expanded the Office of School Support to provide it across all schools and all regions, a designated team of folks to help in schools. This Office of School expansion will have three position conversions for an Assistant Superintendent and two Directors, and some new funding for a resource teacher and an Executive AA to provide additional supports to schools. And I will expand the responsibilities of the Office of School Support into a department that includes testing, that includes non-traditional schools, what we formerly used to call our alternative schools. They haven't had the same OSS wraparound support that we've created for our comprehensive community schools. And I'm very, very excited about that. The department will also bring in our multi-tiered systems of support team and integrate that into our Office of School Supports. That's part of our theory of action to provide the necessary academic and social-emotional supports for kids. So I look forward to sharing with you more details about that expansion in a future work session. I also want you to know as part of the gaps, there's some contractual support for our testing fees. We've always supported PSAT testing in Fairfax. I have money in this budget, however, to start next year a pilot at two to three high schools for an SAT testing day where we would pay for every child's SAT test. In a high school where our participation rates in SAT are lower or we're not seeing the kind of growth trajectory on SAT scores that we've seen at other schools across the county. There's also, you can see a few dollars finally for early education. Those dollars are to maintain, as our salaries rise for teachers was as great, much of this funding comes from federal and other grants, so we need to supplement that because the grant money isn't keeping pace with the additional salaries that we have been proposing. For goal two, caring culture, this is about $15 million to support caring culture. First, a welcoming environment, contract services, those are dollars to support our parent liaisons. I really want to focus under welcoming environment that we would have in this budget, for the first time, a restraint and seclusion compliance specialist whose job would be to ensure that all of our schools in Fairfax County are following state and local regulations around restraint and seclusion and provide division-wide training for those areas as well. Also in this budget is dollars to support a culturally responsive resource teacher, the first for the Equity Office, that would focus on targeted professional development to explore identity, diversity, equity, and actions through additional equity symposias. We started one last year for the whole division, but we need to do equity, not just a symposia for a division. We need to be doing that pyramid by pyramid, region by region, school by school, and there are dollars in there to support that work. The other area around healthy life choices, the largest piece of that is our health insurance. We continue to see increased health insurance rates. That's part of the national market trend and Fairfax is not immune to it. And there's an additional $13 million. It's growing at a rate of about 5%. One of the things, last year, year-end, we did put in additional substance abuse prevention specialists as we re-change, this prior board redesigned the SRNR to deal with first-time kids dealing with substance abuse issues to stay in their schools and not be moved to another school. But we need to provide social-emotional supports if they are going to remain in the school. We added seven substance abuse prevention specialists using one-time money. This budget makes sure that those specialists become ongoing moving forward. And I'm adding in the budget this year dollars for an additional three and a half additional positions for substance prevention specialists. Working with the county, I hope by FY22 to have a substance abuse prevention specialist for every pyramid in Fairfax County Public Schools. There's additional dollars in here for behavior intervention services. One of the things we realized last year is we need to renew our focus if we're going to deal with behavior in our schools on professional development to give our teachers and staff the tools necessary to deal with challenging behaviors in schools. And I have an additional $100,000 that would support that work. Premier workforce, as you can see, is almost $95 million, by far the largest component. But as I've shared with you before, Fairfax County, the difference is the people. The talent in this school system is unrivaled anywhere in the country, and I dare say, the world. We have been attracting the best and brightest year after year and we need to be sure that we continue to provide market competitive compensation for our teachers and for our support staff. People really are the secret sauce in Fairfax County Public Schools. Market competitive compensation will consist of a 1% market scale adjustment for all of our employees and scale enhancement dollars to really look at our salary scales to see where we can continue to make additional enhancements to be competitive with the market. We also have dollars to get our CIS, or what you used to call, or we used to call instructional assistance, back to where their pay is equal to 50% of teacher pay. The prior board asked for that to be a priority. We began it in this year's current budget. There's a three-year plan to get us to that 50% and this represents the second year of that three-year plan to get our instructional assistants to 50% of teacher salary. For exceptional employees, we have our largest single amount of dollars, which is a step increase for eligible employees of a little over 50 million, which averages about a 2.5% increase per employee. Our VRS rates are going up, not because we did anything, but frankly, the state has changed the rate of return rate for VRS, even though the stock market continues to, at the moment, do well. They've lowered that rate for the future and so they've asked employers, which are school districts, to add in a higher contribution. Those dollars reflect that higher contribution rate to maintain our retirement well. There's some additional dollars for workman's comp. I'm proud to tell you in this budget that for the first time in 15 years, I am restoring pay parity between elementary principals and middle school principals. The job of the elementary principal has become more and more complex. They do not have the same level of resources that our middle and high schools have had sometimes for staffing, just as we talked about for special ed a minute ago. And I am bringing back what happened 15 years ago where they were at the same level of pay. This will be a two-year plan to do principals now and to bring our assistant principals to the same pay equity in FY22. I also think that this pay equity will enhance our ability to provide more leadership opportunities for our school-based administrators. I knew through my career, one of the struggles is where you tracked as a school-based administrator for elementary only or for secondary only. This is going to allow us to give more folks a chance to cross between elementary and secondary as they seek leadership positions and ultimately, for some of them, who ultimately will become system leaders and need a firm grasp of the school system from both an elementary and a secondary perspective. There's also dollars in here for professional development, for an ed specialist and a resource teacher to help us develop and implement a division-wide comprehensive plan. Professional development is one of the things that has been cut in the budget over the years when we had leaner times and it has hurt us because we have not been doing enough of the leadership development and training necessary for our staff as demands have increased and expectations have increased. These would be dollars that would continue to support the development of curriculum and resources and to deliver it. We have developed a comprehensive professional development program and I would love and will be bringing to you this spring in a work session what that comprehensive professional development program looks like for your review. I also have dollars in here to redesign our talent acquisition and management staffing group under Human Resources so that we're doing everything we can to continue to attract and retain our personnel. And I am proud that we need to continue to recognize our commitment to having a diverse workforce, to having a staff that matches the diversity of our students and our community. And so I'm calling for dollars to support. And so I'm calling for dollars to support a nationally recognized program called Call Me Mister that focuses on males and particularly males of color. And we need to do more and more to bring underrepresented groups into our teaching force, into our school system. I think Call Me Mister is the right step toward doing more to support and signal that we are committed to a diverse staff here in Fairfax County public schools. There's dollars for Trades to Tomorrow. We had one-time money in last year's budget that supported student interns who begin to get jobs like we used to do in Fairfax County fifteen, twenty years ago, where you could become an intern in the trades, plumbing and carpentry and electrical. This is making sure that that program continues ongoing, and we need to look at ways that we can continue to grow that in the years ahead if we're going to truly do workforce development here in Fairfax County public schools. You'll also see some savings from compensation-based savings, which is the turnover of folks from one year to another. That's a savings of nineteen million. But actually, it's been on the decline a little bit, the savings, because we've seen an uptick in our folks staying with us and not leaving Fairfax County public schools. For goal four, resource stewardship, you'll see about twelve million dollars there. The first is six million, almost half really, is for a staffing initiatives placeholder. This was something we put in last year for the board to talk about what are some additional needs for the system. I have some recommendations that I'm going to share with you in the very next slide, based on the board conversations that we've had thus far, and based on some of the conversations I've had with some of you who are now just coming in. Ultimately, that will be something you all will have to decide permanently about what would fill in that placeholder. Separate from that, there are some things around utilities to look at, transfer to other funds, school construction, and our, our cable communication program. One of the things I want to call your attention to here in this is for facilities trades. I talked about the student intern positions. There's also funding in here for two positions at least for apprentice positions. These are permanent positions, almost like that starting level for the trades positions. We want kids to go in a pipeline from being in a CTE class to being a student intern to having these journeyman apprenticeship positions. I'm sorry, I drifted off in explaining that continuum. We want our kids to be student, students in CTE classrooms, to then move to be student interns, getting an internship opportunity in the trades, to then getting that apprentice position. We had that continuum fifteen, twenty years ago. We've got to begin step by step to build it back in Fairfax County public schools. I also want to make just one other notion on here, even though it says zero dollars about position reallocation and conversion. Over last year, the Office of Auditor General did a review, an internal review and issued a report around trades. We saw that we had multiple, year after year, folks having to trade hourly or logistic funds for positions. Jobs were cut over the last several years in the budget, and people scrambled to use their existing dollars to continue to try to do the work. Even though the jobs were cut, the workload remained, and they would continue to trade year after year. There is no additional budget change to this. We are reducing hourly and logistic accounts, but we're going ahead and saying transparently that if you're year after year trading for this position, this is a position that needs to be noted through the budget process as, as opposed to a trade process. Finally, there's a little bit of dollars here at the end for efficient budgeting and allocation in our contract services for our visitor management system, which is really our security as you enter all of our offices. And while I'm just mentioning security, I know this is a new board and maybe didn't realize the actions in December with the old board. At mid-year, we did spend one-time money to support the addition of middle school cameras outside and inside, up to eight additional middle schools, which has been a top priority for our middle school principals. Let me show you the staffing placeholder recommendations. I said again, this is a six-million-dollar placeholder, but I want to share some strong ideas from hearing from you and hearing from folks on our staff. The first is dropout prevention. We've gone on our leadership team to a problem of practice approach. What are some of our top issues that we're dealing with in Fairfax County? You all have and know as you engage with the community, what are some of our challenges? One of our challenges is our dropout rate. Two of our schools this year were accredited with conditions for a non-academic indicator, but an indicator nevertheless around dropout rate. We need to be proactive in dealing with that. So we brought together a team of principals, stakeholders in the central office, and they brought a series of recommendations. They looked at the data. I am putting out a placeholder of one-point-five million that would support funding for on-time graduation coordinators at nine schools where the dropout rate is higher than we want it to be. It would also provide English language learner support staffing at non-traditional schools where we have large numbers of English language learners, and to graduate, they just need that extra wraparound support to be able to be successful. And those dollars will support designing the data to make sure we're tracking the interventions for kids so that they're staying on track for graduation and that we're better tracking the graduation credits. It's a manual process now. One of the things you'll be hearing that's been said for four years in the working condition survey is many of our employees feel overwhelmed. We've got to take things in our work processes that we're doing manually and convert them to an automated process, and funds are there to do that for dropout prevention. I also have as a placeholder, a million dollars for advanced academic programs. Many of you may know, last year, we brought in a consultant to really relook completely at our discipline system. We got those results late in the spring, and one of the frustrations for the board is, Dr. Brabran, these are great recommendations, how are we going to pay for them? This year, I am being proactive and putting aside a million dollars as you get ready to hear consultant recommendations around advanced academics. You'll be hearing preliminary recommendations later this month and final recommendations by the consultant in March. I want to give you the dollars now to be prepared to be able to respond to those consultant recommendations, whether it's about additional training, additional, again, all of the potential menu of options to support our advanced academic programs. I also want to share with you in here a recommendation of about eight-hundred thousand dollars for an equity per pupil in high school. Last year, the prior board asked us to look at the gate receipts of high schools, and it was illuminating. The gate receipts vary dramatically based on school. And the issue is that becomes an equity issue about what schools can do in terms of extracurricular activities, in terms of field trips, in terms of support for kids to have opportunities that exist in one school but do not exist in another. This working Dr. Duran has spent time doing a national review, and we've come up with a per-pupil allocation based on students eligible for free and reduced lunch. We would need to determine that threshold for the school, much like a Title I, where would you want that cutoff to be to provide those dollars? To be able to supplement the student activity fund and provide greater equity for our schools, particularly as it regards to extracurricular activities. As we work on this issue, I want you to know, if you like it, we have a second year in FY22 planned to do the same sort of equity support at middle and elementary. Because even in elementary school, there are extracurricular programs that are available at one school because of the support of a PTA or PTO that may not exist in another. So I'd love to be and look forward to sharing with you our ideas around that equity per pupil. There is also one here, school board support, and I put that as TBD. I need to be transparent, and this is a new board, to recognize that in December, at the mid-year budget, there was placeholder dollars kept for school board support to provide staffing support for the school board. And if the board is going to have that sort of support, we need to be looking at that for next year. I don't have a funding amount placed. I've left it as TBD, but I do feel it's important to bring that to your attention as you're making budget decisions. And finally, I have dollars, one-point-four million for school counselors. We know that wraparound supports and social emotional supports for kids, school counselors play an essential role. The state has put out new ratios for school guidance counselors, and at elementary school, that ratio, again, it doesn't take effect next year. It's not till FY22, and it's not funded in the governor's budget, but the ultimate ratio, the desired vision, is two-hundred-and-fifty to one. That represents a significant lower ratio than what we have currently in Fairfax at the elementary level. I know it hasn't become a state requirement yet, but I think it's time for us to begin the hiring of school counselors to support that ultimate state goal. One of the things I wanted to also do is highlight for you and for our community, the work we're doing to try to have a budget that really is about every child by name and by need. And that's particularly important for special education and for investing in intervention and prevention for kids so that they can be successful no matter where, where they are as a student in Fairfax County public schools. In this budget that I proposed, again, three-and-a-half million dollars for a new unprecedented chair position in the elementary schools that would, again, impact up to seventy of our elementary schools. Substance abuse prevention specialist, restraint and seclusion compliance person, and behavioral intervention supports. That's just in this budget. In recent budgets, we've done additional positions for mental health supports, for psychologists and social workers. We spent over two million in FY18 for that. Last year, in this year's budget, we created behavioral intervention teachers, or BITs, additional behavior folks who can come in and support schools as they're dealing with and staff is dealing with challenging behaviors. We've also gotten to work with the county to help us with substance abuse prevention with some additional dollars. And we really thank the county for continuing to work to collaborate with us on One Fairfax around, we all have a role to support our children and our community. A few more dollars in skilled nursing services, and we also invested this year in an embutment position focused on special education for our embutment office. I also want to call your attention to just overall special education enrollment and demographic growth, focusing on those kids represented in 2019, a little over eight million. This year, a little over two million, and next year, again, with that increased special education growth of over twelve million dollars. Responsible resource stewardship is important as we look at, at a budget. And I want you to know, each year, we participate in something called WABE. It's, you know what, and I've said, I should know what it is. It's the Washington area, what?
Board of Education.
Board of Education, you all remember it better than I. And it tries as best it can. Of course, nobody can compare directly the different sizes of, of schools. But it certainly does say, what is the cost per pupil? And it lets our community know how much each system is investing per kid. We rank fifth in the middle of the pack around the surrounding divisions with that indicator. Let me show you the FY21 overview. Overall, our beginning balance was just slightly down from last year. The county transfer request that I'm asking for in this budget is eighty-nine-point-seven million. That's just a little bit more than I asked for last year when I asked for eighty-four-point-four million. We do see in this budget, a sales tax and state aid at sixty-nine-point-two. That is an increase from the state from before, a, a nice increase. But I need you to know, while we are happy that the state has continued to invest more in local education, this is just now getting us back, inflation-adjusted, to the levels of state support from 2009. So truthfully, we are catching up state aid-wide to where we were a decade before. You see federally, we, with all the federal mandates and requirements, we are not seeing gains from the federal government. We're not seeing cuts either. Basically, we are seeing flat revenue from the federal. You'll also see some revenue from the city of Fairfax. They pay a tuition payment for their contract with Fairfax County schools, and there's some additional dollars in other revenue that we can talk about at our work session or as the board chooses. Let me show you a few future considerations for the budget. As I mentioned to you already, the Board of Education has prescribed new standards of quality, or SOQs, as you may hear them called, and many of them focus on the social emotional support that we're focused on. It's the right thing to be focused on, school counselors, psychologists and social workers, support for English language learners. All of those are wonderful ideas, and they're not yet adopted by the General Assembly and funded, but ultimately, if they become embedded in the SOQ, the additional costs for all of it, and again, I don't have the breakdown yet, state and local, would be a total of forty million dollars. So as we look at these social emotional supports, we know that we're going to have to begin to really keep in mind that these wraparound supports do bring additional cost to the locality. We also need to look at some local FCPS challenges. I know there's been discussion, and the board prior to you all, in a follow-on motion, asked me to look at middle school start times. I have started that preliminary review. I do not have a proposed operational plan for middle school start times in the FY21 budget. However, I am more than glad to work with this board, to schedule a work session, to show with you the work that we have done around those middle school start time plans, and to solicit your feedback and counsel. I also want to bring you to the issue of critical capital infrastructure requirements. This is a conversation we've had with the Board of Supervisors over many years. We have a hundred-and-seventy-two million dollars in capital infrastructure needs every year, and we're only getting about twelve, thirteen million dollars to, to deal with those. Those things like deferred maintenance, chillers, HVAC systems that continue to not get done, much like we've worked to try to accelerate on our CIP, which is not here, this is the operating budget, but our CIP, where we want to renovate schools every twenty-five years right now, right? That would be our goal, but the money that we have only has us on a thirty-seven-year renovation cycle. So we're behind in the renovation of our schools, and we're behind in the actual infrastructure and maintenance of our schools as well. So those remain real challenges, but challenges that I believe through collaboration with the Board of Supervisors, and our chief operating officer, Marty Smith, has already engaged in those discussions with them, where we can begin to think even more as One Fairfax and out of the box about infrastructure needs are not just Fairfax County school needs, they're the entire county needs. I want to return to where I began, that investing in excellence is what this budget is about. Fairfax has had a legacy of excellence for decades. People have come here to have a world-class education. The challenge is, our challenge still is, does every parent, does every child by name and by need experience that excellence, feels that excellence, tastes that excellence? And many in our community still feel, and many on this board, that we still have fallen short of that standard to support every child. This budget, I believe, is a step in the right direction to do that work. We have focused on our people and compensation for them, and we focused on our students and wraparound support for them. And I believe with premier workforce and student success and those expenditures focused on those areas, we can continue to be a system that works to build equity for every child, excellence for every child, and that we know every child by name and by need, and they get the kind of education, they get the kind of opportunity, they get the kind of access, and they get the kind of achievement, the achievement of excellence that every child deserves in Fairfax County public schools. I want you to see in the next slide about being involved in the process, which you all will be, of course, but also our community. We're going to have opportunities to talk about the budget moving forward. To be able to speak at a school board meeting, we have the information. To be able to speak at a Board of Supervisors public hearing, we have the information. And we will be having all this information. In fact, I know all of this budget information is now posted on our website, right, Mr. Torrey? So it's all up there for you to go to www.fcpse.edu/budget to see this information, and we are hopeful that you will. And let me show you just on the next slide, there's also a calendar process for the FY21 budget. You can see that we'll be holding work sessions and public hearings, and then the school board will be adopting the advertised budget on February sixth, and then the process will continue with conclusion of the adoption of the budget in May. It's an honor to be superintendent in Fairfax County public schools. Many of you know, these board members know that I came here over twenty-five years ago as an intern, and it is an honor and privilege to serve as superintendent. And I look forward with our leadership team and this new board to working together in a collective partner. in a collective partnership to bring excellence and equity to every child in Fairfax County Public Schools. Thank you very much, and I'll be glad to take any questions. I know we have a work session coming up on Monday, where I hope most of them will be asked, but if there's any comments or questions, Chairman Corbett Sanders, I will be glad to try to answer them to the best of my ability.
Dr. Braybrand, thank you very much for this budget proposal that reflects the values and a needs-based budget for One Fairfax. The FY, as you mentioned, the FY budget will be, 21 budget will be discussed at the January 13th and the January 30th work sessions. We will also have a public hearing held on January 27th, and if we need to, we will continue hearing speakers on the 28th and 29th. Action is scheduled by this board for February 6, 2020. So, this evening, I know that we have a couple of board members who would like to have a moment to address your proposal, ask brief clarifying questions, because we will delve deeply into the budget on Monday and have set aside over two hours for this opportunity. And so, once again, Dr. Braybrand, thank you for your very thoughtful work in this area. And I call on Ms. Anderson, followed by Ms. Keys-Gamarra, Ms. McLaughlin, and Ms. Cohen.
Dr. Braybrand, thank you so much for this budget. I'm particularly excited by a number of the initiatives that you've talked about, particularly the elementary special education chair, because I think it's often overlooked how much work it takes to identify and serve students at the elementary level, even though we may have fewer students at an elementary school than we do at a high school, but the level of service that it requires to identify those students and then to meet their needs while still carrying a full load, it's one that really needs to be addressed. And I would like to see this be even taken out further for the schools that have those large numbers of special needs students to not just a .5, but to a full-time position. I'm also pretty excited regarding the Call Me Mister initiative, because I think that advances our work in supporting diversity in our workforce, and I am waiting to see how that pans out. Again, I have a lot of other things that I'm very excited about, but I wanted to share a couple of things for you to be thinking about for the work session. I do want, sooner than later, for us to be able to have that discussion regarding the middle school start times. We know that's a heavy budget item, and the earlier we could begin that conversation, the more prepared we will be to make a decision. As we heard tonight, and we already have this information regarding the sub shortages, I'd like for us to consider what can be done in this area with this budget, because I do know we have some areas where we can have some attention be brought to that. And also, with our students with interrupted learning, who are our students who are dropping out, who are causing those schools to be accredited with, I'm sorry, to be, thank you. I'd like to kind of hear more specifically, in terms of what is happening with the dropout prevention, in terms of how that's addressing that population of students. But thank you very much for a very robust budget.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
Ms. Keys-Gamarra.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. This really continues our discussion with a focus on taking care of our staff first. We are, we cannot get our job done without our frontline, and so I think that we have the appropriate focus to continue to make sure that we are addressing those needs, a focus on equity and diversity, as well as workforce development. So, I applaud you in identifying those in this budget and look forward to discussing those. I do want to mention just a few things so that you can prepare, hopefully, for discussions. I noticed you had 28.8 million, I believe, for enrollment and demographics. I'd like a greater discussion as to what you believe that includes and what that needs. I don't know if that covers some of the things that Dr. Anderson just mentioned, but I would like for that to be a bit more descriptive, as well as, there was monies for centralized instruction. I think there, we kind of, because we have such a new board, and even I don't understand some of what we, what we're already paying for and why we need to have the additional supplementation, so if we can cover some of that as we're discussing the budget. You also mentioned moving forward with FCPS ON to middle school, and I know that I am one board member that has received a number of concerns from parents about FCPS ON. I don't believe that we have received a report other than anecdotal information from students as to what the concerns have been, what the successes have been. I'm hoping that as we look to invest in middle school, that we will have an opportunity to evaluate the investment that we just put into high school. I was a little bit surprised to hear that we didn't, I thought that we had FCPS ON in all of our high schools. Maybe I misheard that.
We do. I was saying, previously, the issue was, when I arrived, we had some version of laptops in seven of our high schools and not in the others. So, that was one of trying to provide that equity across all the high schools that we did this past year.
Okay. So, I just want to make sure, because I know parents have come to me about, well, what about these problems, what supports have been needed, where are we falling short, how is this being addressed? I'm thinking that these discussions need to come together as we talk about moving forward in middle school. You also mentioned Office of School Support expansion. Again, just would like further detail regarding that. I'm gonna skip ahead, just because I put my note in the wrong place, but you had future considerations, capital and infrastructure. I think it's really important, especially for our county counterparts, to understand not just that that is a need, but what that means, how far, what are those numbers? And I've been hoping that our audit office can help us to figure out how to look at some of those numbers, and I want to see evidence that we can submit to the county.
We can get that. We just had a meeting, actually, Mr. Plattenberg and Mr. Smith and I. We can break that down by categories and start to get more even school-specific about the expiration of where use is for some of these infrastructure pieces, like boilers and chillers, and how far, how many years out we are, five years past, 10 years past expiration. So, we can provide some of that data at the right time as the board desires.
Absolutely. I just want to make sure that as we make the case, not just to the public, but to our Board of Supervisors, that they understand in detail what we're talking about.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, I wanted to make sure that I mentioned that. You mentioned also expanding more behavior intervention services. I know that that was one of the budget amendments we put forth last year. If we can get greater explanation as to what we've been able to accomplish with that investment from last year, and the rationale for the amount that you're recommending this time. My hunch is that it's not enough, but I look forward to that discussion. Let's see.
Ms. Keys-Gamarra, we will have a robust discussion on Monday as well.
I'm just giving him a list right now.
Okay.
Okay. And then, I think I'll end with, well, two things. One was talent acquisition, and you have the Call Me Mister, which I have no objection to at all. But diversity has been an ongoing discussion, and we've had a number of years of reports where we haven't seen a great deal of progress. And so, I'd like to see exactly what we're talking about and how you believe that will lead to that progress. And then, finally, in our, one of our last reports, and you mentioned discipline and how we had not budgeted for that. I do believe in the last report for discipline, there were stages of steps that needed to be made, and I didn't see anything, at least maybe I overlooked it. But if there are additional steps that we need to make with respect to that, I'd like to hear what that is so that the board can consider whether that needs to be part of what we're considering in the budget.
Sure.
Now, I am wrapping up my list. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamarra. Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. As the budget chair, sitting alongside my vice chair, Dr. Anderson, I look forward to helping our board tackle what, as you can see, is quite a complex $3 billion budget. So, Dr. Braybrand, thank you for kicking us off here this evening, and I know we'll begin the board's deliberation of this proposed budget next Monday. But, Ms. Chairman, I'd like to just prepare you in advance that, especially with a new board, the one budget work session we have for two hours on Monday is just going to be the tip of the iceberg. So, we'll need to probably get together and plan out.
We fully expect that.
Great. In terms of the things, Dr. Braybrand, that just I wanted to help prepare you and staff for Monday, I don't even know that we'll get to all of the things I would like to talk about, but in no particular order. It is my understanding that the High School Principals Association shared with you that in support of our in-school suspension program, which is something that our prior board's been very committed to, we know keeping kids in school versus out of school is a project for success. So, they were interested in getting IA support. So, if you could bring that dollar amount that was identified for getting more instructional assistance to help with our in-school suspension, and just give us an idea how that fits in your budget priorities, that would be helpful. I'm pleased about the substance abuse prevention counselors, certainly, especially with vaping in our schools. That's a tremendous priority, I believe, for our principals and our families. The other thing, though, that I did not see here, and I wanted to bring to the attention of my new colleagues, is school nurses. Some of you may be aware that currently Fairfax County has one nurse per 3,000 students, roughly, and the recommended best practice is closer to one in 500, to every 500 students. The board had passed a follow-on motion at the prior final budget last May, asking that staff could please do a crosswalk analysis with the Public Health Department to determine best practice and help us understand how we can do growth. So, the good news is that this board did do a one-for-one match with the Public Health Department with year-end funds this past year. But there's nothing in this budget about growing our school nurses. And I understand that it's been run through the Public Health Department, but given that roughly half of our tax revenue comes to the schools and the other half goes to county, I think, similar to our TIRF Task Force efforts, we need to look at this as a shared fiscal commitment to be growing our school nurses. School counselors are essential, social workers and psychologists, but what we have done to neglect having school nurses in a school system where 25% of kids have a health condition, and in our schools where we have high poverty, many of those children don't even have preventative care. So, I wanted to put that on your radar because I think that's important. You mentioned the, a comprehensive professional development program, I don't know if I put comprehensive, but, in your professional development program. I know you and I've had conversations about the fact that the Office of Accountability from way back when, when you were with us as a regional superintendent, that was pretty much dismantled during the recession. With a $3 billion budget and the complexity of our system, we really need to grow back our Office of Research and Strategic Analysis for this division. So, I would like for that to be a part of the conversation, why we're not having any staffing that I saw on this, because I don't think we can continue to do the great work we're doing without having that analysis of our programs. In terms of the elementary principal pay parity, that's something, you know, I brought to your attention from our principals, so I'm thrilled to see that you've brought this to the board. I think it's really important. You mentioned dropout specialists to help augment the SOSIS program. Again, so, for those of you starting with these acronyms, so, our Systems of Support administrators who help us with, again, trying to prevent dropout, increase attendance, and reduce truancy, those sorts of things. We also have had deans of students created in some of our schools. I just want to understand the dropout specialist piece, because this is, again, layering on more and more people in one area. Meanwhile, I've talked about school nurses, and we're not doing it in that area. That really can help all kids. FCPS ON, the middle school rollout. Ms. Keys-Gamarra, thank you for mentioning it. And I look to my other two veteran colleagues on the board. It was my understanding that the prior board, as of just last month, we were not convinced that come fall of '20, that the board's ready to bring this to the middle school level. So, I don't know if we're gonna have time to talk about that on Monday, but I do want everybody to understand, it's really important, that your team that's wanting to get ready and prepare for that, but that's a big step to be going in. And I believe that the prior board had said, we needed more information about the success at the high school level, and doing it one year later after we did high school may not necessarily be where we're ready for that. Middle school start times for my colleagues, please know, that was also a follow-on motion that Ms. Evans and I put into the budget this past year. So, I'm very appreciative, Dr. Braybrand, that you're gonna bring the board up to speed. But I wanted to let you know, it's front and center in my mind, that's something the prior board was promised probably now, at least five-plus years ago, that we would be getting middle school stuff done. So, that's gonna be a budget priority for me to get us moving to getting that into action. And then, that concludes my, hey, heads up, here's what I'm, you know, wanting to make sure we have on your radar so we can work toward this budget. And to my colleagues, again, I recognize that this is a massive budget, and I do want you to know that when Dr. Anderson and I met with Dr. Braybrand as part of the preparation for Monday's work session, we want you to know that it is, our goal to be meeting with all of you, not just after we vote on the advertised budget, which will be February 6th, but while we wait for funding from the Board of Supervisors, that we do a much deeper dive collectively, the 12 of us, to make sure that we can bring our best thinking. Because while Dr. Braybrand and his team has done an outstanding job of really bringing us their best thinking, this is our responsibility. And so, we'll work collaboratively with Dr. Braybrand, but I really want to encourage you to bring your examination to this.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin and Dr. Anderson. It's been a pleasure to work with you, you, Ms. McLaughlin, over the whole process of this budget, and you, Dr. Anderson, at our first budget gathering to prepare for tonight. And I really do appreciate both of your support, and some of the feedback just from the discussions of two days ago, I hope you see were reflected in some of my comments tonight. So, thank you both very much.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand, and thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Cohen, followed by Ms. Seizmorehizer.
Thank you. I think I speak for all of the new colleagues when I say that we're delving headlong into a very exciting time, and we're grateful to be a part of this process. I do want to commend you for the professional development around restraint and seclusion, but I'd like to be sure with additional PD money that we are doing building-wide special ed training for all of our general ed, our staff, our admins. I am grateful for the three and a half million for the halftime bed chairs at 70 of our schools. I'm interested about how those schools will be chosen. And the one compliance specialist for 198 schools and centers around restraint and seclusion, I'm concerned about how that can be accomplished by one human being in the middle of all of this. And I think we've spoken about this, but trust has been broken with our special education families, and I want to see more investment given to areas to recognize our commitment and obligation to serving the needs of all of our students. If we're truly committed to equity, then I think this really needs to be a significant area of growth. I'm glad to see the budget pulling that out, and I appreciate that very much. I'd like to figure out how we can expand and make sure that we're supporting our special ed teachers and parents and families, and especially our kids, in a way that we should be. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Ms. Seizmorehizer.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. I will say, I'm not gonna repeat, but agree with most of what my colleague, Ms. Cohen, said, and that's a lot of what I wanted to add as well. So, I'm just gonna add a couple of things to what she said. First, I would really love to know more about the Office of School Expansion and get a deeper dive into sort of the purpose of that and what it's about. I don't have a great understanding of that right now, so that's something I would love to hear more about on Monday. I wanted to bring up one point about the Assistant Director of Student Activities. I think that's phenomenal to add that, because a sense of, a lot of our students get a sense of community and belonging through participation in either after-school activities or co-curricular activities, and a sense of belonging is really important to student health and suc- activities, and a sense of belonging is really important to student health and success in school. What I wanted to ask is whether that specialist is just for after-school or belongs to co-curricular, and those are some of the questions, in sort of really getting an idea of what their role is and what their specific duties are that's different, or how it enhances or supplements the Director of Student Activities, especially in terms of populations that may have not had as much access to co-curricular and after-school activities, such as our special education population, where there has been not as much understanding and maybe a need for more support in participating in these activities, but a great need for inclusion. So I just kind of want to get an idea of what that role is about.
Sure, sure.
And then the only last thing I want to add is that I love the idea of enhancing our professional development, but we want to make sure that we have the supports for the teachers to be able to access it, whether it's sub-money or access to substitute teachers so they can actually do the training that they need to do.
Exactly.
And one last thing I want to talk about is I love the idea of adding restraint and seclusion compliance specialists. Obviously, we need that in our schools, but I'd like to look at some of the support people that we have in place, such as our ABA coaches. We have about 19 ABA coaches, and that number hasn't changed, from my understanding, for many, for several years, even though the needs of our children with autism, especially our Gen Ed students with autism and our twice-exceptional students, could benefit from access to ABA coaches, the teachers could. So it'd be good to look at some of our other positions that we have to see whether expanding those positions would be helpful in managing the behavior.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. Mr. Frisch?
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Just a couple of things that I wanted to maybe dive into when we have our broader discussions. I think it's great that we're continuing to invest in our IAs. I would say that the thing that scares me about talking about being on year two of three years to get them to half as much as a teacher makes, when our teachers already can't afford to live here, it sounds like we plant the flag in the ground after year three and then we move on. And I would like to hear more about what we are going to do to make sure that our IAs are moving towards a living wage versus a wage that is set to an already too-low wage for another position. FCPS ON, I share the concerns of a lot of my new colleagues about the program, and I'm actually excited to hear some reporting back on what people are seeing out there. I've heard good and bad. I've heard about a lack of consistent implementation from school to school, classroom to classroom. These are things that can be addressed, but I think they have to be addressed before we move on to middle school. Equity per pupil, that is extremely important to me, and the prospect of being able to expand more quickly into elementary school especially, when we know what this money is used for in after-school programming, enrichment opportunities for elementary students, anything we can do to make that happen even faster would be greatly appreciated. I look forward to having a further conversation about this.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Frisch.
Ms. Omesch?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Braybrand, for this robust budget, and I hope, I want to provide some thoughts and things I'd look forward to at the work session, and of course, that's when we'll discuss this further, and present these tentatively, because I want to have the humility of recognizing that we're just getting on board here. So I'm definitely encouraged by focus on ratios, social workers, psychologists, parent liaisons, certainly something I care a lot about, and some of the initiatives on special education and diverse recruitment. I would love to see maybe a delineation, it's possible that you've considered this, on mental health initiatives. I know that, you know, you mentioned substance abuse, and that was a key area with significant funding, but I would love to see, you know, that being just a minor component within that, and recognizing the extent to which students are desperate for that kind of support, you know, addressing depression, anxiety, whatnot, whether it's awareness, whether it's resources, and hopefully lowering the ratios, of course, with psychologists will add to that, but just looking at how we can further-
Sure.
...provide those supports and putting our money towards that. And I would love to see more clarity for professional development, for example, if you guys have thought of what particular initiatives you have in mind. I know some of my colleagues and I share an interest in looking at things like sensitivity, implicit bias, and whatnot, maybe seeing whether that's specific to what you guys have thought through and whether resources are being allocated towards that. And then in addition to that, with premier workforce, looking at, you know, Mr. Frisch mentioned IAs, that's been brought to our attention, you know, significant situations where folks live almost below poverty in our county and teach full-time. But I would be curious to see if there's a way, when we look at, obviously, as you've shown us, supports and additions to staff pay, a way to address or maybe a prioritization that happens when it comes to folks who do live within poverty but work full-time, or very close to that line, versus general boosts towards salaries. I think that that's, it's almost an injustice, really, to have a reality where we have folks that are working in our buildings all day, every day, and still can barely survive versus, you know, have an income that isn't, certainly isn't paying them the, you know, what the profession demands, but it's a very different situation. So, you know, I think of IAs, I think of custodians, other professions that perhaps are more severe but less brought to our attention. And the other thing that I wanted to bring in terms of teacher pay, it was brought to my attention through the Federation of Teachers, that there was the freeze that happened with retirement benefits in not counting years that teachers may have done and how much they would be paid forward. So I wonder if there's retroactive potential room for addressing that retroactively, because that seemed to be inconsistent with our values, and I know happened way before you came on board. Finally, with capacity goal four, I wanted to see if there might be room for looking at environmentally efficient steps forward. I think long-term, that's certainly an area where we can cut costs. Just curious about what exploration, maybe it's just more so of a segmentation of what you've already presented, but whether anything's being invested towards that. So thank you.
Yeah, on that last point, I think we're working on a work session to go over environmental sustainability, and we can address some of those efficiency pieces there. I would be glad to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Pikarski?
I didn't have my light on, but I will ask a question since you called up me. I'm very excited about learning much more about some of these initiatives. Conversation that I wanted us to have as a board with you, when we talk about our teachers and our staff, investing in our people, and we talk about being market-competitive, is that going to be enough? It is my understanding that there, and I do not have details, but surrounding jurisdiction is looking to go beyond just market-competitive, and what is that going to mean for our workforce, for our students? I think it's imperative that we have this conversation, whether we are going to be where teachers want to be, or if we're going to start to fall behind again. And I appreciate everything we've done to get us here, but investing in our teachers and staff, I think, is of the highest priority. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pikarski. Ms. Narenak-Kofax?
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. I really like some of these innovative ideas that are in this budget, so thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
But I do have some questions. I think some of my colleagues talked about that, similar questions, substance abuse specialists, behavior intervention specialists, how we're going to use them. You talked about that in caring culture, and we can talk about that. These are more statements now that we can talk about on Monday. But in the caring culture, I think there was one thing missing coming from last year's board comments. We talked about some of the issues we see in closed and changes needed in some of our alternative schools. We talked about changing scheduling, things like that. So I think, it made me think of that, when you were talking about what needs to happen in our regular high schools to try to keep as many kids there, but we also know that we have alternative schools which are more suitable for some kids if they need it for certain reasons, and we talked about needing changes for that.
If I could, just on that one, one note that I want you, and we'll be able to get to it because several board members have asked, to get into more detail about the Department of Office of School Supports. One of the moves that I would be making is moving the responsibility for non-traditional and alternative school programs out of special services, which already has a ton of things on its plate to do, and under the direction of the Assistant Superintendent for this new department. So really taking that Office of School Supports mindset and beginning to apply it for non-traditional schools and alternatives, to look at, anything could be on the table for those schools. So I don't have a set of changes at this point, except to change the structure of reporting to bring that office, that project momentum mindset, to a set of programs that have really been, I don't think, not intentionally, but just simply haven't had the time with the scale and scope of what we've had in special services to try to cover. And so I think this better focus is going to be able to give us some better creative solutions and ideas along the things that you're talking about.
Okay. So going along that line, I think maybe some of these other things, you'll have similar, you know, ideas. You put about $1.5 million for dropout support. Of course, I'd want to know what schools you have. I think I know what some of them might be.
We have that for you.
But, so that's important. And I do think there was nothing, and maybe it was just because this was the first, I was going over this myself the first time with you tonight.
Sure.
So the thing, what are we doing with the ELLs? I think that's important, because that is one of the highest reasons we have dropout students who can't learn the language quickly enough, come to us at an older age. We have kind of put patchwork quilt on that issue, you know, patched it here and there, but we haven't addressed that directly. So I'm assuming there's some plans that, some robust plans, when you talk about the dropout rate and how it talks about these children who come to us late in their school years-
Right.
...age-wise, but may have real deficiencies coming to us with, you know, education that's nonexistent or of an elementary school caliber.
Right. And we do have EL supports and part of that $1.5 million for some supports at schools that particularly are non-traditional schools, where we've had larger numbers of EL. We can talk about that more, and I would say, like many things, this was a problem of practice. These were the things that were most urgent, most immediate to do. I think there are some longer-standing things, even the state, in the governor's budget, I began, I believe began to address staffing for English-language learners. I know, Ms. Narenak-Kofax, you've been a leader on this board about supporting additional supports for those groups. So I think we're starting it, and I think we're focused on it with this plan, but I'll be glad to get your feedback when we can share with you the greater details of what's embedded in the $1.5 million.
Yeah, I think that's important, because it's been ongoing for several years, and I feel like we need to get to a point where we're more robust on that, particularly if you're doing some kind of support for dropout, because that's a big reason why it happens. These next, they all kind of lump into equity, but they come from different portions of the budget. I'm excited that we're looking at the gate receipts, so you're going to be looking toward to us to talk about, you're going to be giving suggestions about what the threshold should be, what kind of formula it should-
Right. Instead of naming a threshold in the budget, I'd rather have a conversation with the board about what that appropriate threshold-
Right.
Like, the federal government gives guidelines for Title I, and we've looked at others, but I'd rather, instead of throwing it out, listen to you all about what you think the threshold of the school should be for getting that kind of support. And I believe there's some discussion, much like the prior board asked about gate receipts, whether this board wants to look at gate receipts or PTO and PTA funds before making a final determination-
Absolutely.
...of what the distribution would be.
That has to happen again.
And actually, Dr. Anderson and Ms. McLaughlin said, we'd like to have sort of that second step, that second look. I don't have that data tonight, but we could start to pull that data if the board wants to help decide where you ultimately want to land on the equity fund, and especially if you want to expand it to-
Right.
...middle or elementary schools.
I think maybe I, for one board member, need to be refreshed on the gate receipt data that was out there-
Sure. We got that.
But it was stunning, and as well, as you know, you talk about PTA, and I think we need that as a beginning marker for how to start this conversation, and then we obviously need guidance from staff, I think-
Sure.
...to help us formulate that.
We just honestly, on this one, was, it's such a brand-new idea, we didn't want to come out with the thing as a done deal without having more engagement with the board around this matter.
No, I appreciate that. I just wanted clarity on that.
Okay.
Another issue I talk about with equity, and I am assuming, you know, we are waiting for the consultant's report on the Advanced Academic-
That's correct.
You know, last year, we funded the Advanced Academic Resource Teachers in the Title I schools-
That is correct.
But there's many more schools that need that, and I'm assuming we're just kind of, you know, waiting for that report and then those budget dollars.
Right. I didn't want to get ahead of-
That's where that placeholder is.
Yes, exactly.
And that's one of the things. And for my new colleagues on the board, that's something that the Advanced Academic Resource Committee has recommended for many, many years and has gone unfunded. So I think that's really, really important to talk about that. And my final thing is, is it's interesting that I hear from some of my colleagues about the concerns they're hearing about the Laptop Initiative. I have heard nothing but positive things about that. I, for one, while I think we need data to move ahead with anything, that is a real equity issue, because children in the schools that I represent are without computers, and any glitches that may be administrative in nature, which I have not heard of personally. It'll be interesting, I think, to have this conversation. I would like to hear what the negative comments have been, because I've seen nothing or heard nothing but positive. And again, it is huge equity. There are children without these resources. So with that-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Braybrand, once again, thank you so much for this budget. You have responded to many of the concerns and issues that have been raised by the board over the past several years, and really, this is a responsive budget, and we appreciate it. I share many of the comments and concerns and questions that my colleagues have raised regarding the budget and what they want to talk about on Monday. I do have one additional question.
Okay.
And it concerns the information on the dropout programming. And I would like to hear on Monday or soon after how that work and those resources reflect the conversations and the work that's being done on the high school redesign. Because as you know, and as Ms. Narenak-Kofax has mentioned, one of the biggest challenges for many of the students who drop out, and I went to Richmond on this, they drop out because they have so many other competing pressures. They come to us, on average, after the age of 15. They have to support themselves and their families, and oftentimes, it's just a competing physical resources for them. Do they put their physical resources into earning a living for their families, or do they put their physical resources into acquiring a high school education? And when we talk about name and need, that's what we need to remember, is that they have a name and they have a need. And so if you can talk to us on Monday about that, I think it would be very helpful. I also think it's really important for my colleagues on the board, especially my new colleagues, to look at, we will hear in the community that we are growing at a faster rate than inflation. And there are many reasons why our budget grows at a faster rate than inflation. And I would suggest that as we look at it, we understand why. One is that although we have modest growth of student enrollment in general, the categories of growth are quite significant. I don't think you meant to say this, but our general education growth rate is not 8%, it's .8%.
Yes, I meant to say .8%.
I know you did.
Did I say 8%?
Yes.
Oh, you all could have just said something. Yes, .8.
That's why I'm clarifying it for everybody here. It's .8%. But our other categories are growing at a much more rapid clip.
Yes.
And it's even faster than the rate of inflation in many cases, and that includes a 6.9% increase of students who are on- And that includes a 6.9% increase of students who are on our free and reduced meals programs.
That's correct.
Those are children who come to us in poverty, and they have different needs. And so we have that expanded growth. We also have a 3.5% increase in the number of our students with disabilities. And for clarification, even though that's only 955 students for this year, we have more students with disabilities in Fairfax County than all of the students in Arlington County Public Schools. So those are some of those statistics that put a name and the need for why our system is growing the way it is. And I urge our colleagues to take a deep dive in looking how we spend our money and how we are using that money to reflect the name and needs of such a diverse student population. So I thank you, and I look forward to a robust discussion on Monday.
Thank you all. Really appreciate it, and I look forward to seeing you all Monday. Thank you very much.
So now we come to the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in our closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time, will make a motion to confirm the recommended action. I call on Ms. Omech for a motion.
I move to grant, in part, the school reassignment appeal of a student who was found to have assaulted another student at school, and to modify the disciplinary decision of the Division Superintendent.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Ms. McLaughlin. All those in favor? That's Mr. Frisch, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Omech, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Sizemore-Hizer, Ms. Marin, Ms. McLaughlin. Those opposed? That's Ms. Anderson, Ms. Darnak-Kofax, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, Ms. Pikarsky. That motion carries. School Board Liaison and Committee Assignments. I am going to hand the gavel over to Ms. Darnak-Kofax.
I move that the School Board confirm the committee liaisons and assignments as detailed in the agenda item.
Then I will second that.
Sorry.
Okay. Ms. Darnak-Kofax, would you like to speak to your motion?
I, I will concede to you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. So ladies and gentlemen, it has been a great pleasure to spend a lot of time speaking with each and every one of my new colleagues. And this inaugural committee assignment list is one that will allow each and every one of us to build on our skills, to build on each other's skills, and to continuously work together to ensure that we have a mindset of one board for one Fairfax. And I very much, I want to thank each and every one of you for the frank discussions we've had, your flexibility in knowing that we can't put everybody on the same committee assignments, but also with the knowledge that we are a board that votes as one, but does the, divides up the work so that we can be most effective and efficient. And so I request that you all support this inaugural committee assignment list, full well-knowing that in July, we will have new assignments for everybody with a new chair. So with that, I will call for the vote. The motion before us. Oh.
That's what I'm supposed to be doing?
Yeah.
We'll get this together. We're new. It's a new year. The motion before us is that the school, da-da-da-da. Yes, the motion before us, the School Board confirm the committee liaisons and assignment as detailed in the agenda item. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries.
Unanimous.
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations, everybody. I'm really excited to work with all of you. So our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provides for a consent agenda, listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 6.01, approve the minutes of the November 7th, November 18th, and December 5th, and December 19th, 2019, regular school board meetings. 6.02, award the contract for the tennis court repairs at Hayfield Secondary School to ATC Corporation in the amount of $290,738.20, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the School Board. 6.03, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Seven, new business. Following our new business agenda items, there will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 7.01, approve the fiscal year '21 proposed budget. 7.02, award the contract for the automatic temperature control system replacement at Cameron Elementary School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the School Board. 7.03, authorize the Division Superintendent and the Assistant Superintendent, Department of Facilities and Transportation Services, either of whom may act without the other, to take all actions necessary and appropriate in consultation with legal counsel for the School Division to pursue approval of the proffered condition amendment application number PCA 89D00702, including negotiating, signing, and submitting the final proffer statement and any other documents on behalf of the School Board. Item eight, Superintendent Matters. Next on the agenda is Superintendent Matters, and I call on Dr. Brabran.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. One of the things I should have done when I was just up there presenting, obviously, when you get to be superintendent, sometimes you're doing the presenting, but behind that presentation is a lot of hard work. So I want to thank our Chief Operating Officer, Marty Smith. And I know we have new board members. I just want to make sure as you get to know people, I'd like Marty to stand. I'd like, oh, well, there you go. You already knew what was coming. Assistant Superintendent for Financial Services, Lee Burden. I don't know, do we have Alice, our Director of Budget Services? She just, ugh, just left. But they've spent all their winter break working to get this budget ready, as did the staff. I get to call in for a few calls, just to see how it's going and ask a couple of questions. But we really do have amazing staff, and let's give them a big round of applause for a job well done. I also want to welcome the board myself. I'm excited. I'm an excitable person, and I'm excited by nature a little bit, but I'm very excited about tonight. I'm very excited about the future. I believe that the culture and climate established tonight will have major impact in the weeks and months ahead. It's not an easy set of challenges that are before you, but I do believe that collaboration is the way that groups of people come together and find successful solutions to complex problems. And when you create that sense of partnership and collaboration upfront, it sets the tone for everything else. And I believe you all have already done that in just this very first meeting, so I applaud you very much, and we look forward to working with you. I do want to make one notation, I think it was already mentioned, but we are excited about the civic engagement policy that this prior board passed, and it is going to be going into effect on Tuesday, January 21st, after Martin Luther King, which is, in some ways, in a fitting tribute for all the service that he did to this country. And we'll be meeting with all of our principal associations at middle and high school to go over the finer, the final details, to be sure that we implement that policy appropriately. And we do have the details and supports ready to help make sure our schools do it successfully. National Boards is an important thing that we have worked to support. We have 27 FCPS teachers that have achieved or renewed certification from National Board. Over the course of the program in Fairfax, we've had over 500 achieve this certification. FCPS is ranked first in the state of Virginia with a current total of 302 active nationally boardified teachers. And we just talked about, really, all evening, a premier workforce, and really, the National Board Certification, if you've never experienced it, is a really premier way to designate outstanding teachers. They do a whole portfolio of work, and I got to watch a colleague in my very first year in teaching go through the process, and it is an amazingly reflective process as a practitioner. We will be recognizing those teachers at an upcoming School Board meeting. And one of the things we've talked about with exceptional employees and in our working conditions, and I want to say this to School Board members too, is many of you I know want to talk about, how do we get the message out? Part of the message out is continuing at every opportunity to showcase the amazing people, just like we did tonight. I'm at our amazing students, whether the accomplishments are in the classroom or outside of the classroom. How do we showcase our amazing students and the staff that support them? Finally, I just want to make a note that we have online registration for two-way in our world language immersion programs. We are a global school district, and we continue to have world language and two-way programs that are cutting-edge and represent tremendous opportunities for our students and families. Current pre-kindergarten kids can apply for the kindergarten immersion program, and current kindergarten kids can apply for the first-grade immersion program. Online registration will open Monday, January 27th. We have immersion programs available in Korean at Cole and Powell Elementary, in Spanish at Bailey's, Lake Anne, Laurel Ridge, London Town, and Rose Hill Elementary Schools. And we have first-grade immersion programs available at 12 elementary schools, including languages of French, German, Japanese, Korean, and Spanish. Applications for first grade need to be submitted by February 20th. And for kindergarten, it's March 20th. And families will be notified about those results later. So again, it's an exciting night. This is a history-making School Board, and I think the history of the School Board, that it's history-making in its composition, but it will be making history in the decisions and the collaborations and conversations that you have in the months and years ahead. And I look forward to partnering with you.
Thank you, Dr. Brabran. I now call on Ms. Darnak-Kofax for an update from the forum held earlier this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Earlier this evening, we held a forum. The forum topic was brought to us by our Chair, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and it was addressing hate and bias. We had a robust conversation on the potential of expanding our curriculum to, on cultural sensitivity and anti-bullying, to more explicitly address the issues of hate crimes, and also to begin at an earlier age to address the issues of hate and bias in our curriculum, how that can be taught better, and how it impacts our community. We had, were presented with information on what is currently in our curriculum, as well as in our curriculum that is required, as well as other classes that children can take. And so it was decided that this would be moved to a work session, and Dr. Brabran and the Chair, and Karen and I will work together to get that on the docket for our board to have a more robust session, as well as get more detailed information from staff on what we currently have and what we can do to expand that curriculum.
Thank you, Ms. Darnak-Kofax. Next on the agenda is Board Matters, and I call on Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. I want to wish everyone a happy 2020. It certainly is going to be an exciting year with our new colleagues on the board, and I do want to say that I'm really looking forward to our retreat a week from today, on March 16th, where we'll really have a chance to spend more time talking about how we do work collectively together. And I believe Dr. Brabran captured it well, on how we can set our own culture of collaboration, which, having gotten a chance to know many of you for the past months, I just have a lot of enthusiasm and excitement for that. I also want to say that I was really pleased to be joined by several colleagues, including Dr. Anderson, who I share Anandale High School with, along with Ms. Ratchness Sizemore-Hizer, and also we had Ms. Omech come to Anandale High School, where we were able to celebrate the Anandale High School grads of 2019, who were being honored at this winter break for actually receiving their IB diplomas. It was just absolutely inspiring to be, because over 25 of the students were there. They talked about what their experience was in the IB diploma program, and all of the tremendous universities that they all have gone on to attend. And they also had such great things to say about the IB coordinators and the teachers they had at Anandale. It was just a moment for Anandale to shine, and it was great to be celebrating all them. And Ms. Keys-Gamarra, they had a really nice statement from you, because we, we know you'd really wanted to be there with everybody. I also wanted to just say, Dr. Brabran, that not only am I proud of the board for its, the prior board's decision on civic engagement, where we are empowering families to decide that once a year, if they would like their children, to really live that learning opportunity, especially in the shadows of our nation's capital. But I, I deeply appreciate your responsiveness to many of us on the board who contacted you over the holidays, that there were people in the community who were concerned that the date, the effectiveness date would prevent them from participating in things like the March for Life. And so I believe it was very positive reflection on this board and on the School Division and your leadership to act so quickly and put that into action so that all students, regardless of where they want to spend their time, are having that opportunity. I think it reflects well on FCPS. And then finally, I just wanted to make the community aware that I will have my January office hours on the January 22nd, both in the morning at 9:30 to 11:00, and then again in the evening from 7:00 to 8:30. And I will share that in an upcoming newsletter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms., Dr. Anderson, Board Matters.
Should turn this on. Well, I'm very excited to be here. Thank you all for the very wonderful welcome. I'm looking forward to collaborating with everyone, both on the board and the staff, to ensure that we make the most appropriate decisions and the most beneficial decisions for all of our students. I'm really looking forward to advancing our work of equity, because as Dr. Brabran shared earlier, we, we have a great system, but it's not one yet that is great for all of our students. So I'm really looking forward to advancing that work. I've been very excited this week by my visits to schools and learning more about what is happening in our schools in Mason District, talking with principals and hearing about their concerns, and I will be an advocate for those reports. And I was so excited to go to Anandale earlier this week. The ceremony was tremendous. Thank you also to Julie Strandly, who helped to put that together, who's in the audience right now. And I'm looking forward to more events of that sort, and I am ready to work. So thank you.
Ms. Marin.
Good evening. Yes. Good evening. I am enjoying getting to see all of the schools in the Hundred Mill District. I certainly visited all of them when I was campaigning, but now getting to actually meet with the principals, PTA members, presidents. I am also very interested in our equity work that will be, I think, you know, we, someone mentioned our most important jobs on the board, and I think budgeting our priorities and our values of this county is a key part of what this board needs to do. So the budget's going to be an immense opportunity, and I'm really excited about this budget, Dr. Brabran. I think it reflects a lot of things that constituents in our community have been asking for. So that's it for now.
Ms. Sizemore-Hizer.
Thank you very much. I will echo my colleagues in saying that I am extremely excited to be here and to work with everybody, and I, and having gotten to know everybody across the county for the last several months, I think we're going to have a fantastic board, and I'm really excited. I wanted just to say a quick word to staff. As I've gotten to know some of you the last, you know, month or so since the election and through orientations, I'm very impressed at how professional and responsive you all are, and how dedicated and passionate you seem to be about your jobs and our students. And so I personally am very excited to have the opportunity to work with you all, to, as I like to say, continually improve our schools. as I like to say, continually improve our schools so they are great for everybody. And as an at-large member, I really take seriously my responsibility to sort of get to know the needs of our entire county, but also to bring an equity lens to the role across the county to make sure that our system is great in every part of our county for every student. And so I'm excited to bring that, and especially to represent populations that I think need representation and bring voices to those who need to be heard, but really to think about consistency and quality for everybody. But I just wanted to give a shout out that I've really enjoyed so far getting to know you all, and I look forward to working with you all.
Ms. Tolan.
Thank you. I'm also very excited to be here, back with FCPS in a little bit of a different role than I served for years not too long ago. It would not come as a big surprise if we all approved our committee assignments, but unless you read the notes, I guess nobody knows who's on what committee.[1050.13][1050.13](LAUGHING). No surprise, I will be on the Joint Environment Task Force, and partially in preparation to get ready for our first meetings with that. Plan to attend a Faith Alliance for Climate Solutions event tomorrow afternoon. They've been a very strong partner of ours on the JET, and we'll be talking about financing opportunities for energy efficiencies and clean energy and net-zero guidance, so that hopefully we can move, you know, FCPS forward in taking advantage of some of these renewable energy opportunities to meet our climate goals, be an example for our students, and save some money at the same time. We're going to work on that. I'm excited that, to work very closely with the Board of Supervisors as well as we move forward. John Faust in Drainsville and I are looking forward to working together, and his next newsletter will have a, you know, meet your new school board member column or note in there, and it'll have information in there on how the public can sign up to get my newsletter that I'll be putting out shortly and periodically through the year. I'm looking forward also to, you know, we're setting up meetings with the schools. One of the things I'm going to be doing is a day in the life of a student, and starting out with the high schools and then moving on to the middle schools, et cetera. So I think that will be a great way to really see what is happening in our schools, and looking forward to meeting lots of students across Drainsville.
Ms. Darinak Kofax.
Thank you, and Happy New Year to everyone, and welcome to all of my new colleagues. It is going to be an exciting time working with so many of you, getting to know you and knowing you have so many good new ideas, so it'll be wonderful to see all the new energy that you bring to the board, so I look forward to doing that and read your CIP over the weekend. I know, it's just a little two-inch document, nothing, not that much in there, but, you know, be ready for the work session on Monday. And I am going tomorrow. I know Ms. Omeche is going to attend with me. I am going, and Ms. Sanders as well. Corbett Sanders, we are going to attend Lee High School's IB conferring ceremony, so we, as you said, Ms. McLaughlin, they are always really wonderful to see where the kids are. These are the, our graduates from June who completed and were awarded the IB diploma, and to hear where they are and to hear their stories, it's always quite inspiring, so I look forward to that tomorrow at Lee High School.
Ms. Keyskumar.
Thank you. I too am grateful for a fresh start for all of us with all of our new colleagues, and looking forward to the awesome things that we're going to do together. Really looking forward to delving through this budget as a, really a measure of where our priorities are and talking about that as a body. As the, I know I'm on the audit, because I'm the audit chair, but we, as one of our speakers said today, we're looking forward to using that independent arm to look at some of the things that our community is really concerned about, and so I look forward to hearing, first of all, talking to those on the audit committee, but also bringing those concerns to the whole body. I hope to be able to make the IB event tomorrow. I'm not sure due to my schedule, but I will do my very best, and I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year.
Ms. Pikarski.
All right. Happy New Year. Just want to say how honored I am to be here, to be representing my community, a community which I actually started my professional career as an FCPS teacher, so to be here today on this side, working collaboratively with past colleagues and this wonderful staff that we have is quite something. So I am definitely looking forward to it, spending a lot of time learning. I want to thank staff and our Chair for everything they did to kind of get us up to speed and be prepared from day one to do the hard work. I will be reaching out to my communities, doing scheduling, we've begun scheduling school visits, talking with principals and parents, and I'm very excited about that, as well as my committees, one of which is audit as well, so.
Ms. Omeche.
Thank you. Likewise thrilled to be working with everyone on this dais and everyone sitting over there, looking forward to building relationships and working collaboratively, and grateful for how you guys have helped us and supported us thus far. I have also been visiting schools. I, as they mentioned, went to Annandale, attended a basketball game at Woodson, and funny enough, was invited by the kids to be their speaker at the Maldion Conference at Edison. All really exciting things that have been going on in the county, and look forward to being at Lee tomorrow, especially as a former FCPS IB graduate myself. Have also been inundated with over 100 tweets about snow days, and just want it to be known that I wish I had control over that. I don't, actually, I don't wish that, but, but happy to provide information and be accessible for every other reason out there. And really just want to make a statement to the public that, you know, I really, as we all do, take this very seriously. I hope to be accessible and available to everyone, as I think is known, my website and, oh, sorry, my email and my official phone number is on the website, so please, you know, be in touch for any reason. And, you know, I'm serving on audit committee, public engagement, and the minority student achievement oversight committee, so especially if it's something to do with that. And look forward to sustaining relationships with our teachers' unions who came and spoke today, soon-to-be unions hopefully, and various groups, and finding ways that we can engage communities that otherwise wouldn't show up, who may not be able to make it, and to this audience or to be able to speak. And finally, really excited to announce an initiative to be touring all the high schools, so look for me at a high school near you soon. Anyways, look forward to hearing from you all.
Ms. Cohen.
I just wanted to say it's a surreal experience, certainly, to be on this side of the desk after a few years spent watching my three minutes from that side, so it has been an amazing experience. I also want to echo a thank you to Chairman Corbett Sanders and the school board staff in particular for getting us ready to be the kind of school board members that we wanted to be on day one, and we really owe you a debt of gratitude for all the time and energy that you all put into, and the countless phone calls and emails, asking things from the most mundane to big, huge questions, so thank you so much for that. I just wanted to say, as a Lake Braddock mama, that while we got to have the opportunity to give a little recognition to some of our outstanding athletes, that Lake Braddock also on December 20th recognized some of their outstanding employees. Ashley Elliott was their new Teacher of the Year, Tashiba Raglan was their Teacher of the Year, Denise Dean was their Operational Employee of the Year, and Kristen Giarden, one of my favorite counselors, was their Professional Employee of the Year. So congratulations to all of our staff everywhere, but today, particular recognition and appreciation to some of the folks at Lake Braddock who make it the incredible high school that it is. So I'm so excited about the work that we're going to get done, and appreciate all my colleagues' commitment to putting in the time and energy and effort to showing up and being ready and being able to make good decisions for our kids in this county, so thanks.
Mr. Frisch.
All right. Excuse me. I think it's already been said, but Happy New Year to everybody, and I guess you're welcome for the snow day. As Abrah said, we have nothing to do with it, but if you're on social media, you wouldn't think that. And so with Ryan gone, you can follow all of us, and we'll let you know at the same time that FCPS does.[1591.15][1591.15](LAUGHING). I'm also excited to be working with everybody and visiting schools and meeting with parents and teachers and other stakeholders, and at the idea of, excuse me, of moving forward equity and opportunity for our students and our staff, particularly as we take on issues like the budget and like CIP, which is a lot, you know, a lot of fun to dive into as a new board member. Keep an eye on my social media and my newsletter, which you can find on the FCPS website. I'll be announcing office hours for February soon. And I want to say, before we finish this thing, that how exciting it was to see Speaker Fillercorn sworn as the first woman speaker in the history of the House of Delegates. She represents part of my district and part of several others. And how amazing it is that I get to serve with all of these amazing women myself, and I cannot wait to see what fun we're going to have and what progress we're going to make for so many people. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. So we decided to allow you all to have a kind of a slow roll into your duties as the school board, you know, with CIP and budget right out the gate, but that is a tribute to the confidence we have in the skills and abilities of each and every one of you on this board, so for that, you can be grateful. Just kidding. I do want to bring your attention to, or the community's attention to a couple of things. One, I am thrilled to be able to go to Lee High School tomorrow for the IB ceremony. And for those people who don't know about it, the amount of effort that our students put in to achieve the IB diploma is significant, and the skills that they obtain through that process truly reflect the portrait of a graduate. And so I'm just thrilled for them. I also wanted to bring people's attention to, if you have kids and you want a great event this weekend, Mount Vernon High School is putting on Charlotte's Web. And so it's a wonderful way of supporting a great high school, but it's also a wonderful way of bringing our young people, at all ages, but especially the little ones, into the school so that they too can imagine what it's going to be like when they end up at our high schools. So I encourage you to look at that. And last but not least, I look forward to being at Sandberg's School Counseling Advisory Committee tomorrow as well. So with that, this meeting is adjourned.